Good morning. Today is Wednesday, July 21st. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners. And I'll call this meeting to order our first item of business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we're standing, if I could, I'd like to have a moment of silence for an employee, a friend of ours, Bill Sorias, who passed away on Sunday. Thank you. Thank you. Approval of minutes. We have some minutes for June 16th, June 18th, and June 28th.
I didn't have any corrections.
I didn't either.
So make them, oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 16th, 18th, and 28th.
And also again.
Motion and a second. Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Public input, public comment and discussion. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? I thought you were probably here for a meeting. Come on.
You want me up there?
Sure.
Please.
And for the record, it's Mike Gancia. Good morning.
I'm here to encourage you to join Lander Elko in Eureka County as constitutional counties. I in a way, it's more or less just confirming your oath of office for protect and defend the Constitution.
Yep.
And I think it puts the various agencies, regulators that we have to contend with at notice that if they're coming here, they better have all their ducks in the hole.
Yeah.
It's not unlike sanctuary cities or something, you're affirming to defend the law. And I think it's kind of, it's a nationwide movement right now. And the more aboard, the better it's going to be in returning our government to the way we like to see it. You know, and that's, I hope you consider that.
Yeah. Our district attorney was looking at the words on that, the wording of town. We'll go from there.
Okay. Does that, you know, for this, every citizen, that's the last chance to to defend yourself against EPA regulations, any of the other regulatory agencies that are out there.
Yeah.
I mean, their goal has been not necessarily to be right, but they know they can break you financially without outside help. And if you got the county backing you up, you jump in the head of the game. Okay, that's what I have.
Okay.
Thank you for coming very much.
Thanks. Okay. Yes, thanks. Any other public comments in here?
I have something. I just want to let everyone know I have tickets to the fundraiser for the annual BASK dinner that's held by the Persian Healthcare Foundation. It's a scholarship fundraising dinner. They're $45 each. It's August 14th, Saturday. So if anybody wants tickets, I have them.
Anybody on Zoom for comments? None reported. Number three, review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on the business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of the business.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't see.
So I'll make a motion to that effect, but there's none.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Road Department.
Good morning.
Good.
So I'll start with looking for another secretary, unfortunately. I guess that's on the agenda.
It is. So you have approval.
Just want to do that first.
Yeah, let's do that first. Then we'll go into the rest of it.
So I'll move to, I had a question of whether that position could be made halftime or not, and I asked you about that.
Yeah.
It's a full-time position. Get back to you, Carol.
No, that's okay.
I did a lot of thinking about it, and I really hate to make it halftime.
Okay. And that's fine. I just, you're in the budget for a full-time.
Yes, it is.
And I'll move to approve the advertisement and an administrative clerk.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. So last meeting, I forgot to fill you guys in. We were using the onboard GoToRadio maybe a month ago. Jason was going to Reno and the tranny blew up. So we were stranded infernally for a bit, but anyhow. So we looked into repairs and we can for 1,800. Of course, then there's for the commissioners, but anyhow, we figured the value of that thing is about 3,700 to 5,500. So I asked Jeff what he thought. I'm not, I get my, I probably, if it was mine, I might fix it. I don't know. He thought being
That's not a bad.
Yeah, well, but the price to fix it approaches half the vehicle. I don't know. I don't know. That's why I leave it up to you guys. It's going to be worth a little more than auction, but you know, typically we don't get top dollar moving ox and those vehicles anyway. So I don't know. And I guess we probably can't make that decision today, or maybe we can. I don't, I don't know how we do that.
Yeah, it's not really an agenda.
We have the new, new vehicle. We've been using the Hyundai, the old Hyundai for about, it was going to get rid of the Jeep. So I don't know. I guess, I guess my recommendation is cut our losses. I don't know.
Cut our losses.
160,000 on it.
So what are these vehicles used for?
What does it, a pool car?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just used for county employees to use as
If they have to travel.
Yeah. The DA uses it, DA's office, sometimes other offices, sometimes the sheriff, occasionally. We use it occasionally. We have to go get parts or whatnot. It gets cheaper, cheaper to run, you know, better on gas than our vehicles. Oh, for example, a kid used it, used the Hyundai to go to Winnebago for imp shot training, might be a lot or so. Stuff like that. Basically, like you said, a pool car, but we have another one that we basically replaced all of it with just using for backups.
So we'd have to put it on the agenda anyway to go forward. So.
Bring that up.
Yeah.
Anyhow, you're all filled in now. Sorry about that. We get ready to patch coal. Well, we started patching Coal Canyon, but wanted to start a couple of weeks ago. Unfortunately, our broom broke on day one.
The new one?
No, no.
Oh, the other one?
Our good broom, but couldn't get it, you know, it's a while to get it fixed and stuff. So I found a used one at state purchase. Went ahead and used part of my capital out, a small part. Everybody used ones, 1,400 bucks. Charge up the air conditioner and we're using it. It's working good. So knock on wood.
Yeah.
It'll be a good, we need a backup anyhow. Our, our main broom breaks down a lot. It always has. It's a lot, I don't know. Not that great kind of lemon, but anyways. So we done that. Been spraying weeds, upper valley mostly. I think I got it almost beat. Then I went to lower valley. I'm losing the war, but I'm trying. Anyhow, and also we mowed weeds. Basically, the subdivision up there in Grass Valley is just out of hand. Kosher, the big green ones. So we went up there, mowed them, try and cut the fire danger, and I hope to get up there spraying, but I don't know. And then also we did the same thing on Wilkerson. We got ahead there. So we mowed them. I did get those sprayed.
Those things grow so fast and then they get five feet tall.
Terrible. I got a call a couple of weeks ago. We had a washout in what we call a stone cabin. It's a, it's a route you can take, excuse me, to go the back way, basically to Burning Man, cut across the desert. Nathan Carmichael called me and said it was washed out. So we went and fixed that. Been blading around the valley. We bladed North Randian, we bladed up the landfill, later the rifle range road. Now we're working on Duncan's Road and going to turn that into a project. We're probably going to do haul some gravel on Duncan Control from the bridge to the end of the pavement. It's, it's been in need for quite some time. It's been on the back part of the room to fix that up. It's not that great. It gets, gets rough too quick. Anyhow, and then we finally got, we got the waterline fixed in Emily with help from Rusty. We thank Rusty for that. We set up our screening plant up here, the community pit, and make some gravel that'll go to, part of it'll go to Duncan Control. I'm going to do some shoulder in the valley hopefully. I got my new hired for the road Jacob. I had him, I've had him in the office for a few days learning how to do the vouchers and stuff because it looks like it's going to be a gap. I'm not that good at it. So I had boot training him. He's really handy with the computer. So that'll be good. And then you'll show the, the new secretary as well. And then of course, Boo Six will help us out. So that, that was nice of her. I finally got the weight limit signs up on Union and Old Strom for that bridge that's deficient. Willow Creek, I got a call yesterday. Willow Creek is what I washed out. So Jerry's up there right now working on it and that mining company that's, that basically they're partners with us on that road right now. But we have an agreement with them. They're helping us. So we thank them. They brought their dozer down and so we don't have to haul ours out there and we get them fixed.
Willow Creek is off of 400 Winnebago by Unionville out that way.
So anyhow, we're working on that. And then we've been patching Coal Canyon and we hired a kid for the landfill. I was going to get into that later, but anyhow, I used him yesterday helping us patch. He wants to work, wanted some overtime. So I went ahead and did that. And he was, worked out really good. That's all I have for road that I think I should get something. So we hired a kid, well, the kid that, that you hooked us up with, Carol. Thank you.
I didn't, but yeah.
Anyhow, looks like it'll work out good. He's a go-getter, something like that. Landfill's busy. I've been helping him. I guess I could have told you earlier. Anyhow, Jacob's been spinning, well, since Mitch left, Jacob's been up there working and thank him for that. No problem for him and I really appreciate that. Some people don't like to do that kind of stuff and he was, he's good with anything. So I really appreciated that. So we give him that help. Now he has a new guy. We also been helping him haul dirt, push dirt, trying to keep him ahead because I'm, you know, Stevens is taking over for Mitch. So busy, busy. So and then additionally, we, the road department, we cleaned up the Emily transfer site and cleaned up the Grass Valley transfer site again. That's pretty much it. Colby went to imp shop.
So we have a salary resolution for Colby Howell. And he has experience. So he's coming in a couple of months higher.
He's the grandson of a volunteer at the recycling center. That's just, I mean, I don't know him.
Right. You kind of, yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah. So anyway, I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve the salary resolution for Colby Howell to 24/7 for the landfill operator effective July 12th, 2021. I'll second.
Motion and a second. Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Anything else? Good job.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
So we've been doing weeds, fixing sprinklers. Happened to repair the line for the third time now. There was one that was tied into ball fields. So we're can't figure out why it keeps getting broke, but it's broken again.
Is it breaking, is it breaking above ground?
Underground.
Oh, it is.
So we're going to work on that. Put some nightlights out at the ball field to light up around the concession stand between the, between the concession stand and the conics they have out there towards the kiddie ground. And then towards the driveway that comes in. So when people are coming in out, a little easier for them to see and so nobody will get hurt. And then we'll be adding some more lights to the outside of the concession stand itself in front of, above all the doors. So if anybody is out there doing, should be seen better. Other than that, we've just been doing a lot of weeds. Over at museum, out at the airport, the parks, ball fields. We have windows being put in at the the justice court offices today. So.
How many windows are you doing?
12.
12.
Yes. Bull resistant glass, let it say. Now there, that's business as usual.
Yeah. Good job. Any questions? Any concerns?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Persian County Fire and Ambulance. Is, is Sean on? He was going to try to be on.
Yes, sir. I am online. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, just like we're right.
So for the Grass Valley Fire Department, yeah, things going well. We're a little bit ahead of our normal amount of call volume. Had quite a number of medical calls this year. We also had a few fires. A couple of them were mutual aids out of our normal area of operations. We're up to 17 members of 18 authorized in strength. Training continues to go well. We are about two thirds of the way through our firefighter one program, which is our major emphasis this year. So yeah, going well. The, the big issue we currently have is our, our medical slash brush truck is out of, out of service. So we're just hopeful that we can identify some funding to, to start looking for a replacement for that sometime in the future.
We do have that identified in our COVID funding. We'll see.
Okay. Yeah, I know. We're just, I know we're waiting. That's, that's just our, that's our main capability that we're, we're currently short on right now.
Right.
We're, we're covering with our structure truck. You know, it, it's, it's functional. We're, we're able to provide the service. It's just, you know, it's, it's not ideal because it's more difficult to than it's based.
One of the bad parts about that is it's a six month lead time.
And that's being optimistic, I think. You know, that's the salesman telling us it takes six months. A lot of that will depend on chassis availability and you know, if we don't, if we don't make the order when they have the chassis in stock, then those, those commercial chassis only get produced like so often per year. And just based on my previous experience at other services, we've, you know, if you, if you get out of cycle, it, it can really put you back while you're waiting for the chassis to be delivered.
Yeah.
Could we purchase one of these through state purchasing or, or something like that?
I don't know that they would have anything like that. Now, Sean, did you, did you see someone on state purchasing a different, not a brush truck, but a different kind of vehicle?
I did not.
Maybe it was Dan. We were talking about a heavy, very heavy duty truck that was on there, but it wasn't, it's not a brush truck, but whether it's still to look, good to look at him.
Are you talking about in their surplus stock?
Yes.
Yeah, I've not been looking at that at all. It must have been Dan. Yeah, they, you know, the, you know, state purchasing has the, you know, their, their stock has been pretty small lately because the, the organizations that used to, to access property through them kind of don't do that anymore. They do, they do direct auction. So
It was Jerry Monroe that saw that.
I see. Yeah.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say their stock is pretty small. They don't, they don't outsource as much or, or access as much property to that group as they used to. So but you know, fundamentally, if we're looking at a new chassis, you know, whether we buy it through, through state purchasing contract or whether the, whether the company buys it, it's, it still really comes down to the availability from the supplier.
Okay. Anything else for fire department?
Do you want me to do the, the emergency manager and LPSI stuff?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. So we had a LPSI meeting on the 14th that went well. It was well attended. Just missing just a couple of people. So good participation. Main effort there was to do the workups for the upcoming active shooter exercise, which is going to be on Friday, the 13th of August. Working with the sheriff and the school district and the fire department slash EMS folks primarily to put together what kind of things are going to be exercised there. But that's been, it's been four years at least since the last active shooter exercise. So I think that'll be time well spent. Grants are pretty well on track. In, you know, going back and forth with submissions with the state, that's always an iterative process. It takes four or five times, it seems like, to get the package completely submitted. But we have two, two of this next year's grants in hand. One for, they're both through the CIRC, the State Emergency Response Commission. The first one is the OFDI grant and that, that's going to fund some SCBA's about $26,000 worth, I believe. The second grant is the United We Stand and that's going to fund some tactical gear for the sheriff's office, Kevlar helmets and first aid kits and stuff like that to outfit like for, you know, for an active shooter situation, as well as some training, specific training on active shooter and hostage negotiation. So those are both in progress of being executed. That, that approvals have been received from the state on those. And then also we just distributed funding from the COVID vaccination fund. We paid out about $26,000 in supplementary funds to various folks, to the health nurse's office and the hospital and the sheriff's office and the fire department. So to kind of augment them for efforts expended during the COVID vaccination. We have about $26,000 more left in that grant for the next fiscal year. And I think, you know, depending issuing that money out or spending that money will be contingent on, on us actually doing additional COVID vaccination stuff. So right now, our COVID vaccination effort is pretty much limited to what Cheryl Haas and Marsha Foreman are doing over there at the health nurse's office and maybe a little bit at the hospital, although I don't have a bunch of information on how many people they are seeing or vaccinating there at the Love Lot Clinic.
Good job. Advisory board?
That's about it for emergency management. On the Grass Valley Advisory Board side of things, our next meeting is next Monday, the 26th. So that's all seems to be doing well. The Grange is back to doing their, after COVID, they're back to doing their normal meetings. They meet there on the first Tuesday. The local Boy Scout troop has expressed some interest in using that facility for their meetings. They're, they're getting asked to leave their current facility, which is actually in Winnebago. So working with them to see what their interests and needs are. And I did have a couple of requests. So from a couple of years ago, we have, we still have some dead trees that are outside the, outside the community center would ask if, if buildings and grounds might be able to finish taking those down before they present some kind of safety hazard, as well as doing some work on the vents, the, the exhaust vents that come out through the side of that metal building of all. That plastic stuff is all broken off and there's birds starting to nest in there. So would like to see if it's possible for buildings and grounds to kind of take some action and, and work on that. Other than that, everything else is good at Grass Valley Community Center. And that's really all I have to report.
And I believe it's my turn to go. So I will do that.
Thanks, Carol. We'll look forward to seeing you.
Talk to John.
Thank you.
Getting out there.
That was it, right, John?
That's it for me, sir.
Okay, thank you. I don't, anybody from Love Lot Fire on Zoom? Moving on to Emily. I was at the Emily Firehouse Saturday. It was their, their annual street dance fundraiser. And there were quite a few people. That was very good. I was most impressed. They had a pool set up in the front of the firehouse. It's just a little pool like that. It's actually for, for water, for helicopters to come get water out of. Anyway, the kids were having a blast in this. And I, I delivered two AEDs, new AEDs to the firehouse for their use. And nobody from right safety department, Cheryl on?
No, she sent a report. She has clinic today. So for health, they're still giving COVID vaccines through the state. There's not a large demand at this time. They're getting ready for the yearly flu pod, which will be September 30th, 2021. They've requested 700 doses again this year and hopefully that will come through. So they have no idea how many people are going to show up for the flu vaccine. Under safety, they've received the remainder of the new AEDs and they, they are being placed in the buildings. And she's in the process of returning the old AEDs, old AEDs. Pull pack to starting the building assessments for Persian County. They just completed the admin building and the library. And we have the reports now and we'll work on the, the recommendations that they have. All employees have received their yearly safety courses and are doing them online. And we had the first safety meeting on the 7th of July and everything went well. It was well attended. And she's gotten some very positive feedback from the different offices. Cemetery, we finally have the new software and she started inputting the data. It's slow going, but it's, we're getting there. We're still battling the weed problem and that's always going to be an uphill battle, especially this time of the year. The weeds are just amazing. They don't need water to grow.
No.
Mine are six feet tall in one area. So that's, that's it. I'll have to report.
I T. Good morning. Good morning. So I'm working right now on our our annual renewal items. And several, several plannings and project management steps around our new phone system and our new internet network connectivity. And we are also, we've also kicked off a network assessment with the with CISA. It's part of the Department of Homeland Security, I believe. There's cyber. It's, 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 it's the cybersecurity arm of the United States government. That a Secretary of State is basically paying them, paying them to kick off network assessments for all counties that are related for elections, infrastructure security. So we, that, that has begun. We've seen, well, I've seen a, a pretty significant upswing in support requests. Most, most, most likely due to the, the downtime I, we had with our remote monitoring maintenance tool the, the last couple of weeks. That is back, that is back up running now. That incident is pretty much, is pretty much over. The software vendor, Casia, is still is, is still putting out security patches to clean up after it. And I've pretty much been able to determine that we were, well, I have been able to determine that we were not affected by Casia's compromise. So the advantages of having a solution hosted in cloud rather than on premise. That's, that's, that's probably what kept us safe for the most part. Since they host the, the platform itself for us, we don't have it in our, we don't have it hosted in our environment itself. There's the, the vector that the attackers, attackers use, a malicious update for the platform doesn't apply to us because Casia just applies those updates directly rather than shipping them out over the air. So made me very happy. It was not my problem. But that, that system is now back up and running. And that's, that's my update.
Where are we at with our phone system?
The equipment is arriving at SCC Communications. It's been trickling in over the week. We're looking at starting to deploy the equipment the first couple of weeks of August. And pretty soon here, we're going to be setting dates for cutting over from AT&amp;T to Star to Star. So probably before the end of August, we'll be on the new phone system. I'm, I'm actually meeting with Glenn from SCCCom tomorrow to go over the programming for the phones. So that is, that is moving along at a rapid pace.
You had a comment, Heidi?
How is all this networking and internet stuff interfacing with the broadband project and ATP solutions and so forth? Are we moving ourselves for broadband?
There is no contract on the new internet stuff, so if you wanted to switch over the internet.
We are working with ATP for broadband, so we need to be interfacing with them on everything because the things that we may be doing may not interface with the new internet.
So the only, the only, the only thing that.
Are we communicating with ATP?
Yes, but I had to move forward. I, I cannot, I could not wait.
We're not, we're not moving forward if we're not keeping him in the loop and we pull the trigger.
And this, this is, this is probably more of a discussion offline, but.
I think it's a discussion we should have.
So the phone system does not care who our internet provider is, just so long as it has a way to get to the internet.
Okay.
And ways to get to the internet specifically for redundancy, for, for our public safety critical facilities. For the internet side itself, really, really that, that only affects our, our core four facilities.
No, we've been getting out ten facilities and networking.
Not, put, put, putting aside, putting aside the broadband, just, just, just to define what I am working on right now. So so we have, we have a clear idea of what the edges are. I, in order to get the new phone system, which we desperately need, we have to have better.
Which should come through the broadband.
Right, but that is, that is a long-term project.
It, it isn't. It can happen soon.
Are you in conversations with Danny?
I have, I've been in contact with Danny and he, he knows, he knows that I'm doing this, that I've done this. He was at the meetings where these, these two projects were approved by this board. He, he was listening in over Zoom.
But he wasn't able to jump in on those conversations.
He, he did in fact jump in on those conversations. And he contacted me, but every time we've talked about this, he has contacted me afterwards when we've had conversations. He, the, the, the last, the last round of the internet proposals, he was, he and his contact, Richard Pinto at AT&amp;T were the ones who provided AT&amp;T's proposal for that last round when, when the projects were approved. So he is absolutely aware of what's going on. We, he and I have been talking about this. And the rea, the reason the board made it, the decision that it did, going within NIS, who graciously provided us with no contract, but, you know, kept month to month. We went with that one so that we would be able to get out of the way of AT&amp;T if we needed to. Going over the details with Danny, it is going to be a long-term project because there are, there are technical parts of this. For instance, our public IP addresses. AT&amp;T will not provide public IP addresses for us when we go to their solution. We will be required to go to Aaron, the, the entity that manages public, the public IP address space. So the internet addresses for in the United States will have to get a block of IP addresses for them. We'll have to find somebody to announce those IP addresses for us so that we can point them at all of our public resources. That is not, I have never done that before. I have to learn how to do that.
So can ATP systems do this for us? Have you asked them that question?
I haven't had a chance because I've had all of these other things that I've been trying to do. We haven't even put out our broadband RFI yet. Because that was the, the one that we were provided. Bryce and I both looked at it and we both agree that is, it is severely lacking in what a RFI would require. So I, I'm, I'm not trying to, to, to put the brakes on broadband. I don't, I don't want us to move ahead in a way that's just going to put us in a worse situation.
I don't want to move ahead in a worse situation either, which is why we need to continue to have conversations and make sure we don't screw up the broadband on the other side.
Absolutely.
Because we need it for the entire community.
Yes.
We're not going to get anywhere without it and this is the first chance we've ever had to get to this point.
Yes.
I think doing this in the DA's office might help create the broadband board. So we also need to make sure that the county has self-function. Because the network ever on is so slow that it's hard to do business.
Right, and, and that's, and I am trying to a, address that with Danny as well. But we, we, we're, we're trying to rebuild the truck as it's barreling down the freeway. And right, right now, we need better tires. We, we got the engine on its way, but right now we need better tires. So that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get better tires so that when we get the new engine later, we're good to go.
So is it worth throwing more money at the, the system that's pretty much lagging? Then moving forward as fast as we can with broadband and, and the other, another solution?
We don't really have a choice.
But we don't know how fast Danny can move because we as a board have not decided, yes, pull the trigger and go forward, Danny, let's bring the sound, bring the quotes in.
So what, what's the holdup on the RFI?
Do we even need another RFI? We had one last year that failed through the OSIT's office.
The, that one.
Yeah, we need an RFI. We have to submit it for quotes and we have to follow the public bidding process.
So.
The one-page document that was provided to us is woefully adequate. I can't believe that that was even submitted frankly. The other RFI's are thirty, forty pages long. They're comprehensive, they're expansive and the one-page document just isn't going to cut it. It doesn't provide enough detail for a provider of that type of service to give us the types of quotes that we need in order to comply with the public bidding process.
Okay, so how long will it take to go through the RFI system?
Well, Justin and I need to find the time to sit down and draft another one out of whole cloth. Perhaps we don't have to do that because we have other RFI's, but we contracted with Danny to provide, to provide the RFI. And now we're in the position to where we have to draft our.
You, you need to do a better job than.
Yeah. Yeah. From, from what I understand, in RFI has to, it has to define what we're looking for, how it should be provided. And what, what kind of responses we want to see.
Correct.
And just, that, that basic one just wasn't.
It didn't have enough detail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, it was, it was very general.
I would add that you're doing a fine job and keep that, thank you.
Justin's doing a great job.
I appreciate that and Heidi is too. Heidi has been spearheading this and beaten down doors and I, I don't, I, I, I couldn't.
That's why I don't mean to fight you bitchy, but gosh darn, we've not been this close before. Let's not screw it up. How do we go forward and not screw it up?
So what do we need to do to move forward?
I really don't know, but I just don't think we piece me when it isn't the right answer. Well, how is upgrading the county internet screwing up the whole, I mean, the county and the business?
And then with NIS, that was just so that we could start operating where.
I, I am terrified that that phone system is going to go down. There's, there's, there's like one person in all of Nevada who still has, who's still willing to work on it and there are no parts available.
Or our, our existing.
Our existing phone system.
That phone system has been here longer than I have.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's been, I'm pretty sure it's been there as long as that building has.
The phone system is independent of broadband.
Yeah.
Phone system's independent.
But it's, 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 they're kind of together because the new phone system requires internet.
Right, but we have to get our phone system. We have to rely on NIS to service that phone system and their internet. At the same time, we can work towards bringing in broadband.
Yeah, so.
They're interrelated, but one, one isn't going to prevent us from getting the other.
Would, would AT&amp;T like to get all of those pieces of our business? Absolutely. But the, 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 the timing just didn't work out for them to get the whole pie.
Right.
Which, which they want. But we're, we're willing to give them a pretty big chunk of the pie. It's just this little sliver that we need right now before it becomes a super important issue, before it becomes a safety issue. If that phone system closes down, law enforcement can't make or receive phone calls, maybe other than the nine one one, since that's, since that's an independent system. The county, the, all the offices in the admin building, courthouse can't make or receive phone calls, that's a serious issue. That's, that's, that's an issue that people either resign or are fired for. To be, to be honest, and I like my job.
So where do we go from here? Where do we move forward with ATP systems and, and all that?
So it sounds like to me that we either need to have Danny provide us with a more comprehensive RFI or Bryce and I need to sit down and draft it ourselves.
Which you've already, excuse me, which you are already working on, on doing.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, that's where we gotta go.
So I will, I will put an action item down here on my list.
Danny drafts and Danny can't fit on it or help AT&amp;T there.
That would be a conflict, interesting, yes. Can we make that a priority, please?
Trying this.
Well, I disagree that Danny drafts that they can't fit on it. They could have easily provided a stock, some type of stock RFI that they have that we could tailor it to suit our needs specific to Pershing County, rather than providing a one-page document saying that that was sufficient.
The one-page document is my fault because I asked him to do something that was very simple for us to understand. You know, not, I didn't, I wasn't looking at the whole RFI. I just wanted something simple so that we could at least go out and do the RFI. So if there's no conflict, we can ask him to provide.
He can provide it and that we can tailor it to our needs. That will probably be quicker.
So could you call Danny and ask, do that and then you guys just tailor it to fit our needs?
Yep.
That would make it a lot easier.
As, as soon as, as soon as we're done here today, I will reach out to Danny. And I'll, I'll see some.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Economic development.
Okay, we've got a lot that I wanted to talk about then. The other part of broadband is that W N D D had their regular board meeting earlier, earlier this monthly, last month, I don't remember, I'm sorry. And that W N D D board voted unanimously to do broadband mapping for the region. That is a cost to the counties. I, there was other members there that said, that hey, there's no way I can commit my county to, to doing that. So Des Craig will be sending a notice to the commissioners for the next meeting so that he can speak to you about broadband mapping and the cost. The cost would be two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for that map. It would be in a piece that we need as a region so that we can go for grant funding or broadband. Unfortunately, with OSIT, which is the Office of Science Innovation and Technology through the governor's office, they don't plan on doing any mapping. Their mapping, they are waiting for NTIA, I don't know what that stands for, I'm sorry, and also FCC to do mapping. That's at a federal level. Really, where do we rank in the priority list on the feds level of mapping? So that's not going to happen anytime soon. In the meantime, coming down the pipeline in the next couple of weeks, it's lots and lots and lots and lots of federal dollars for recovery money and some of that's earmarked for the broadband. We're not ready. Once again, as a state, we're not ready. As locals, we're not ready. I don't know. I hate this issue and I just want it fixed.
Yes.
In D I A's, it's for action, telecommunications and information administration.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So that's kind of where the broadband is with W N D D. OSIT is coming to. Um OSIT is coming to visit us on August third. I have booked a room at the city hall. They will be um here at ten AM. So if any of you are available, come on in and meet Brian Mitchell and Joe Fedoso once again. Um probably all they're going to tell us is that they're going to do mapping with NTIA and FCC and that they can help with grants for schools and libraries and tribes. That's about it.
So when you say mapping, is that, I'm sorry.
Checking to see who's where our bandwidth and so.
And where it is right now.
On a neighborhood level of, yes, where are the deficiencies of broadband throughout the region? Now, it was kind of interesting. I met with Cheryl Gonzalez of Western Nevada Development District yesterday as well as uh Mayor Edgington from Fernley. And we met with Bob Potts and Director Michael Brown. Director Michael Brown is the governor's office of economic development. Who's the top guy. So anyways, we're chit chatting with them about broadband because broadband has come up in all of the economic recovery and resiliency um workshops and planning that W N D D has done over the past year. And broadband touched every single issue as a need and as a as an as an issue. Um and so talking to those gentlemen, Mr. Potts and Director Brown, and we told them that we were planning on doing this mapping for broadband through W N D D as the region. And they're like, well, why not the state? Um you know, W N D D covers about fifty percent of the landmass of West of Nevada. Um would it be that much more to map the entire state? Um so the question was was asked and and the the answer is no, we're looking at sixty thousand dollars to do the entire state most likely. Um so the question was asked to go ahead during a second meeting that I went to. Um what if we as W N D D just mapped the entire state would go ahead, kick in some dollars towards that and then that would help obviously our member agencies not have to pay that uh almost three grand? I don't know what the answer is to that. Um we're gonna W N D D is gonna let that percolate and go its mind for about a week and then follow up on that. Um uh information, see if there is if uh you know, if there is an interest in mapping the entire state. Um. So, yeah, basically, it would it would map the deficiencies. Um there would be a fee to keeping this mapping updated yearly. Um I don't know what that fee is. Um I I think Des Craig would be able to tell you when he does it's. But the good thing is is okay, fine, it's interactive and we're going to keep this mapping system updated. Um oh, Love Lock got broadband and look, they're running well and doing well, but oops, this neighborhood in this far back corner of Love Lock is not. What do we need to do to get to that neighborhood and to make that neighborhood stronger or inlay or union bill or this, that and the other? So it would be important to keep that map fluid and fresh um and and filled with data const consistently just so that when these federal grants and so forth do come through, we can actually apply and and know what we're talking about. Um and and I I know we all know that without the studies and the mapping and all this stuff, we can't apply for grants. We're not ready. We don't know what we think we know what we want, but we really don't. So there's that. Um. I am working on a job fair for next Saturday at the community center. It will be from four to six PM. Um I um have commitments from a handful of businesses so far. I really need to beat the pavement and go around to all of our small businesses and see if they want to have a table um and some applications and do a hiring event uh at the at the at the job fair. Um I am working with manpower and the hospital um to to put this together.
Good. Cold Canyon, why not a Cold Canyon contact?
US silica, uh Elaine Trulls, yes, yes.
It wasn't US silica, it was the other mine out there. Um. First goal?
Oh, uh Pershing goal. Used to be or maybe it was America's first, yeah, really canyon. Um I don't have a good contact for them, so if you do, I'd love to have it shared with me.
I shared the date with um HR out there, but.
Awesome. Good. Yeah, because yeah. I will. I will contact you later to get maybe that HR contact information from you because I was trying and people that I knew there have left and they're a little difficult.
There's a new HR person. Um.
Okay, not a problem. I will follow up with you. Thank you very much. Um. Oh, um I went to Nevada at Nevada News Business Weekly meeting um last Thursday. And uh that was a breakfast meeting. It was the first one that they'd had in over a year. Um speakers there were speaking about construction and housing, which uh was fitting for all of our needs. Um interesting, um depressing. We're we're screwed. So there was a gentleman, the owner of Western Nevada Supply Company. Um he deals, you know, sewer pipes, toilets, this, that, and the other. And um his he said, you know, it's just been a horrific storm. Um you know, we had COVID, so it's the factories and everybody shuts down, so there's no production. And then we had snowbid, which was the big blizzards in Texas, and that's where all of our all of our um chemicals and so forth come from for PVC and so forth. And so those Texas factories still aren't online. So in addition to the COVID shortage, now we have the snowbid shortage. So uh oh, and then employee wise, you know, people, everybody is begging for employees. Um and 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 so it's just it's just a difficult time. Um there was a fact thrown out there and I can't verify this, you know, where they brought this fact in, but for every unemployed person that's sitting, you know, waiting for a job, there are three jobs open.
Oh, yeah.
Um so we have a sh- a worker shortage. Um we don't have a job shortage right now.
You would rather collect unemployment.
I you know, I don't know. I have different opinions about that, too. I I don't know if that's right, wrong, or indifferent, but you know, I guess the good thing is is, you know, for young people such as my own girls. Um if they want something different and want to try something different, there's an opportunity for my daughters to to make a move, you know, right now because there aren't any, you know, enough workers and employers, or excuse me, employees. So um if you're, I I hate to say it, if you're looking for some something different, now's the time to go and try something different. And so then in our own area, though, for um Humboldt and Pershing, our unemployment is under four percent. Obviously, we have employee shortage. We have, you know, over ninety jobs at the at the prison vacant. Um you know, everywhere around town you go and you have, you know, higher within, you know, come and come and get a job. Um so are we really you know, worker shortage or are we in a housing shortage and we would have more workers if we had better housing? So I don't know. That's kind of an interesting an interesting thought. Um so I think that's all I have for today. Thank you for letting me vent.
So the next thing up is the rental agreement.
Oh, I guess. And I think I forgot to drop the link to the green and talk to you, Karen, did I or?
Yeah, we have it in.
Oh, okay, good, good. So.
A whole dollar.
A dollar a month, yes, yes.
Suburban. I appreciate being there. Um it's it's I think it's a good fit. Um I see a lot of people that walk into city offices for the water district. Um I think people are able to know where I'm at, and so I do appreciate being there.
So I need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the rental agreement with the city of Love Lock. You mount it one dollar a month.
And I'll second that.
The motion and a second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Motion passed. Google of Nevada, ninety five eighty regional development authority for walking, interlocal agreement.
It's coming. Can we put this back on the next agenda, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm waiting for the signature page from um Mr. Maher.
Okay.
And then Brownsfield, I didn't give you a Brownsfield update. And again, still such a fun project to work on. We are scheduling our last of three workshops for in September. Um I don't have the exact date yet, but we're looking at the week of September thirteen through the eighteen. Um to date, we have done um twenty eight phase ones, eighteen phase twos, sixteen reuse plans. Um. Our next broadband meeting or excuse me, Brownsfield meeting, we are actually going to do in person. And so that's usually with myself, Cheryl, Don Better, um the two gentlemen from E P uh N D E P, uh uh Ruben Ramos and David Friedman, and then Lisa Henusiak from EPA as well as our consultants, Philip Childers and Tom Mix. So we normally get on a Zoom meeting call and have done that since about March of last year. Um to monthly to to keep on top of where we're at with this grant. Um but we're actually going to have the next one in person and that will be at the end of August, on August twenty fifth. Um pretty excited about that. We're going to do a tour of the community, look at the projects that we have completed. Um look at any new and upcoming projects that we may want to to jump on for Brownsfield. Have a lunch meeting. Um we will have to have a Zoom meeting call at that point in time because uh EPA and Lisa Henusiak is not allowed to travel yet. Um and then we're going to uh continue preparing for our last workshop. So pretty exciting stuff. Um some of the successes that you I've probably told you before would be the windmill building and having the phase one, phase two, as well as the asbestos and lead paint survey. Um and you know, we all know that there are things potentially happening with that. The other one is the Tulsa Warehouse down in the industrial park. That's the old kitty leather plant and the warehouse. That one had a phase one, phase two. Um I think there's a little bit more going on with that, but last I had heard that might be an escrow. Um I'm not I'm not sure. I haven't followed up on that lately. Um and another one that we're working on that would be a success is um potentially the Episcopal Church, which is on Franklin and Ninth Street. And so we're doing a phase one and phase two. I don't know if we're doing a phase two, but anyhow, uh phase one and then the asbestos and lead paint survey on that. And so looking at opportunities for that in the future. So it's been fun. It's an exciting project. We are also doing Rose Gulch Mine and which is that I think it's about fifty acres up at the base of Orianna on the um I guess it would be on the southeast side of the Orianna Road. Um just south of the wellheads, I guess.
Oh.
Um but on the other side, the Orianna Road. So um that that property is owned by John Heiser and um who knows, maybe solar opportunity for that in the future. I I don't know, but let's let's get it done and and uh go move forward with that. The next grant uh notice of funding opportunity should be released in October. And then we will have to have that um grant completed and ready to submit by December. And that's when we will be asking to see if Humboldt County and Winemouth would be interested in participating, which the uh just kind of the preliminary talks with them. Yes, they are interested in proceeding with that as a partnership with us, so.
Have you had any contact or anything from at least two of the both the data center, those guys, and then the Orianna sort? Haven't had any.
You know, it we could talk offline about different things on that. Yeah, you know, next time you run by or I run into you at the at lunch, let's let's chit chat a few minutes. But nothing I want to say online. Thank you. Okay.
So good, that's two things that are related to Heidi, so it's all right. Tom Adams was scheduled to uh appear before the commission at eleven twenty today. He's not going to be able to. But he will provide an offer, a written offer required to the next meeting that the board can discuss. I think the next meeting talks for not on the score. So um he is getting after it. And then I had a question about broadband. We haven't discussed how much that's going to cost. How it's going to be paid for, I think.
It's a phone bill.
Right, but how much?
Well, I mean, unless we have to get the RFI now to get this cost.
Well, you have an idea how much it's going to cost.
No, I don't.
You have no idea how much broadband is going to cost.
No, to construct it, zero construction costs.
You have any idea, Justin?
Well, um I can pull up the the bids from a couple of years back. I think I think AT&amp;T's proposal was somewhere in the forty thousand dollar range or just the four little buildings here. If you want me to, so with they they want as big in order as possible so that they can give us the biggest discount they can.
Is that forty thousand from when um our our RFI last August?
No, that our RFI last August uh was the one where nobody but five staff responded because they were all trying to get on to rural digital opportunity.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Um. Which helps neighborhoods, not businesses.
Right. Um the RFI that again, that was the tri-county RFI. One we did before that was it was the first one we did with uh full state. That one, that one was talking about building off fiber for um anchor institutions in Purge County. Um so not just the buildings here, but like all over the county. That was millions of dollars.
I don't think we have a good quote, honestly, is my opinion. I don't think we have a good quote because we have now found out that the AT&amp;T fiber is at or near a lot of our anchor institutions. And if it's at or near, there is no construction cost. So basically, it does become a monthly, a monthly bill.
So the monthly bill will be forty grand?
Well, I I don't I don't know that we have that yet.
I know, but we have to have an idea of how much it's going to cost. Yes, it's been represented that you don't want to screw it up.
Mm hmm. Yes, agree.
I don't think that anybody um is doing anything, just screw it up.
No, 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 I know. I just I'm just.
I think the biggest thing, the biggest obstacle to getting broadband is the cost. And if we're going to put out an RFI, we need to be working at the same time towards figuring out how it's going to be paid for. Otherwise, we can get the RFI and then we're left without knowing how we're going to pay for it or we're left scrambling.
And we had that before in our last go around year and a half ago, where, I mean, they had big dollars, but they didn't really have an exact dollar and it's not from the dollars they had at that time, then we could afford anyway, right?
It was my understanding that we were going to use some of the COVID funds that the county received to help pay for this project.
I don't know if you can use COVID funds for a monthly bill, though. I mean, we still have to have a monthly bill.
If it's just a monthly bill.
And then we wipe out all the rest of our, you know, it it then, you know, all of the other bills, you know, AT&amp;T, NNIS, this, that, and the other. Those all go away and now we're left with this new bill. So what is this new bill in comparison to all the old bills?
So where do we get that answer from Danny from?
We would get that answer from RFI response.
Right.
Okay, so.
We just pulled up the numbers from the the last proposal that AT&amp;T submitted. Um their proposal was or uh four thousand five hundred ninety six dollars thirty three cents a month for the sheriff's office, the annex, the admin building, the courthouse. Uh we'd ask them for three year pricing and basically their pricing is just that forty six hundred dollars times thirty six months, which comes to a hundred and sixty five thousand four hundred and sixty seven dollars and cents.
For total three, for three years.
And that's when we did it through, yeah, we had that on our.
So that's only for the four buildings.
Only for the four.
And I think what Heidi is advocating is that broadband be made more expansive.
Or layers, you know, okay, fine, yeah, let's let's say in in five years, we want, you know, ten buildings, but today we want these, but we're going to put in that order so that we
Right.
we build out to that.
And Danny.
So was our RFI for these four buildings or is it for community?
It's bigger. Um. Yeah. Heidi and I can only bring in orders from those which we represent. Or any, I don't know. So what we're what we're trying to do is we're trying to build a footprint. Or then for Danny to then go to like private businesses and say, hey, this is what we've got in here. Do you want to get in?
Yeah, and that yeah, and that's a different, that's a different level. That's a different, that's a different scope of work that but to start with, to get the government buildings. online, you know, okay, yeah, let's start with the core, but let's say, hey, you know, in five, 10 years, whatever it is, we want all of this. But today we can focus on this and then we'll, you know, we'll start to build out. That's fine, you know, we can do this in layers. And then, you know, the, the businesses and so forth, that's, that's something separate, you know, that, that Danny would work on his, on his own. That's, that's not what this commission needs to do. But until we get that network or the fiber here, you know, the middle mile, which is what this is, is middle mile. And, and so there's, there's three different types of, of, of internet. You've got the backbone, which runs down the highway and the, and the trains and, and train paths and so forth. That's the backbone. We can't tap into the backbone. We know it's sitting right there and we wish we had better internet, but we can't touch it. Middle mile is from the backbone to the community. And that is what broadband needs in order, in order to get here. So the broadband, and so, so from, from backbone to, to, to the community is, is middle mile. Then you have your last mile providers, and those are N N I S and Sky Fiber and this, that, and the other. Now, I'm not saying that N N I S and Sky Fiber can't be middle mile. Yes, they can. They can build the infrastructure from the backbone to the community and then provide that to the businesses, neighborhoods, et cetera. But what I'm specifically saying is our middle mile is actually in the street at some of our businesses. We just need AT&amp;T to actually put it into the businesses, our, our, our offices and so forth. And those points are at or near our facilities, and that does not need a construction or potentially does not need some sort of construction cost. So, the only way we're gonna get grant dollars, though, is for a build out. And that's to build the middle mile, basically. And we, we, we don't have that.
A lot, a lot of companies are building their own municipal broadband structure. This, this works very fast, that's why.
Sorry.
The, the, this, this part is, they don't wanna be that middle mile. They don't wanna get into competition with local businesses. And the costs.
Well, it was my understanding when we had the discussion that, that we approved Danny to
to talk to AT&amp;T on our behalf and get us that pricing and so forth.
And it, that's the pricing that we were presented, correct?
No, I don't, I don't know. But that, I, I don't know. I mean, I think now he is able to broker better deals also. So I think that's a work, you know, it's, it's still, it's a work in progress. And, and part of it is, is come on, guys, what do you, not you guys, but you know, us as a community. What is it you ultimately want to see? What is the first layer, second layer, so forth, and so forth, and so forth? And that's why he's talking about FirstNet as a public safety potential backup system. That's why he's asking about the car, you know, the, the cradle points in the vehicles, you know, especially for Mlay and Grass Valley officers, so that there is connectivity for those, those people. You know, it's, it's what is our network? What do we want, you know, for the redundancy of our own network and our own servers? Do we want them still here on premise? Or do we want them off premise? So there's still a lot of conversations to be had as to what ideally we want. And, but, you know, until all these, what do you want? What do you need? What do you, this? I mean, we can't get pricing until we nail down some of those. And that's why I say, you know, when we're going out and we're piecemealing, well, okay, we need this, we need that, we need this, and we're not talking about it as a holistic approach. So are we gonna shoot ourselves in the foot? Maybe not. Maybe, maybe this piecemealing is the best. I don't know, but.
The best conversation to have is all of our department heads and Justin and you and Bryce all meet with Danny and get it all there at once.
Potentially.
That would probably, having everybody that has a need in the same room, having the same conversation would probably help instead of, you know, trying to get the information for one person at a time.
Agreed.
So, maybe that's what we should do is have a department head meeting with Danny and Justin and Heidi.
I don't know anything about IT, and Justin is our IT person. I don't know my department heads meeting at all.
I have nothing on my plate. I don't.
We don't know anything about stuff. That's Justin's area.
Well, I think we have enough for the RFI. If the intent is to just bring it into the four main buildings that we talked about, the plan to enlarge it going forward with the passage of time. And I think we can probably accomplish that. I just want to make sure that we have enough detail for the four hour, our, our RFI. So that we're getting accurate quotes.
And I would think that if we bid it out as the larger project and, but say, hey, we're, we intend on going to all ten buildings. I don't remember how many we have, ten. Let's say ten. We want us, we want to go to the all ten in the next three to five years. However, we want to start here.
Yeah, but that's.
Because we'll get better, we'll get better.
That's our contract.
Right. We'll get better, we'll get better pricing.
Contract to go out for ten buildings, what our initial intent and what we can afford this for.
I don't, okay, I, I, I think, I think we'll get better. I think we'd get better pricing, saying we want ten in, in this amount of time.
That's why I asked about the, the cost.
Yeah. We've got it.
I'll, 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 I mean, Brett, Justin and I can, can, can you that?
Present it as a, as a project.
Yeah.
So then, then we can start with this.
We can talk about it outside of the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Heidi.
Lacy?
So no, I'm sorry, no till, no seven o'clock, eleven twenty?
No.
Okay.
But I have been talking to Tom.
Awesome.
Lacy?
At the last meeting, I informed you guys that I had worked late with Devon to get our tax rolls filed since. After the meeting, when I did the proof with the vendor, I found a special assessment issue. So Devon had to come back the following Monday and we had to start over. So tax bills finally went out yesterday, so you should be seeing them in your mailboxes.
Okay.
They are, amounts have been available on the website, so we've already taken payments. I did interview and Heidi, so I should have a meeting starting August ninth, so hopefully.
Yay.
That works out for us.
Come and stay.
And I am leaving tomorrow for vacation, so I'll be back in a second.
Good job.
Relax. Enjoy.
And then we'll start taking a load off.
Reed?
I don't have anything to say.
Really?
Did you get my email yesterday?
I did, and I will pick that. I've already asked Laurie, so. And I know the difference is that I included the sales tax in there and.
Well, and they did a trip charge on the second English, too, because the overall differences on the charging dollars and so on.
Yeah. I'll work on it Saturday.
Thank you.
Laurie, is she on?
She is.
She is?
Oh, she's, she's logging in at four. I'll, I'll send her a request.
Okay, Bryce?
Um, I apologize for being later to the meeting than I usually am. I'm a one man band, so I was on the phone today. For some other things, I really don't have a department update pretty well, but we probably need a litigation.
Okay, and we have a salary resolution?
Yeah, there's a salary resolution for Braylon Allen. As you probably all know, Cassandra Steele, she did a great job at the child support office, but she decided to pursue other opportunities, so we'll miss Cassandra. But Braylon has done a fantastic job. She's, she was working part-time for a year, and the progress that Braylon has made during that year has been outstanding. It's phenomenal, probably equal to or better than anybody else that I've seen in that department. So I'd like to just move her to where Cassandra was, when Cassandra left. And move her from an admin two or admin one to a caseworker one. And I think that would put her, her classification in the thirty-one range. And.
Thirty-one, one.
Thirty-one, one. It's well deserved. I think she deserves that promotion. And also Braylon is, she almost has her degree, and I would like to reward her for that and also retain her because she does such a good job. So I just ask the board to approve that. It would be retroactive to July first, and I've talked to Reed about it. I have the money in my budget.
I'll make the motion to approve the increase for Braylon Allen.
And I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All of us in favor? Motion, yeah, thank you. Ted Stevens. Sherry Allen, I haven't heard from him today.
To act on this here. Under Laurie's amended contract.
He was contacting Laurie to see what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just want you to.
Yeah, so we have a amended contract.
Morning.
Hello? You're there?
I am.
Okay. What can you tell us?
Thank you, Justin. I was out front. I'm sorry, Larry.
I said, what can you tell us?
Not much. I saved us about forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, all we need to do is approve this contract?
Do you have any comment?
Do you have any questions?
Do you have any comments on that contract?
No, I, I'm trying to catch the flights up with each appraisal cycle. And so this, what, summer flights are very reasonable, so this will be out further in our county. You know, Jersey Valley, Dixie Valley, et cetera. We're trying to catch up per each cycle, and eventually a flight will happen per appraisal cycle, which is the most beneficial way to appraise and fly.
Okay.
I will make the motion to approve the amended contract with Eagle View for the pictometry flights.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of a amended contract for Eagle View. All of us in favor? I am motioned.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you.
Who has the contract? The original for signature and the contract for the lease agreement?
The amended contract I delivered to Karen. If you need another copy, I can deliver it again. And I just want to reiterate, I'm not, I'm not opening up a new contract. I just amended the original one, Bryce, to save some money and do a different type of flight. We're already under contract with them prior. This was just an amendment and a really great deal to catch up on appraisal cycles with the savings involved.
Is this the one that does mule deer and antelope?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll approve it.
Got a good deal.
Yes. Okay, so if you need a copy, just drop me an email or I can bring another one to Karen, whatever works for you all.
Okay, thank you.
All right, have a good day.
I guess that takes us to number seven, Derby Field. Unless Jerry Allen shows up. Derby Field, several things have been going on out there. I was out there for a couple hours Monday with the defense people and the gate technician on, on telephone. We worked on the gate opening. We've been having issues with that. Did some, some changes, improvements, and we're gonna hope that the changes we made fixes it. Actually, I have three other things. We have, we have an N dot aviation department inspection report that we received. It shows us we have a couple of things we have to work on. And what part of that is some work that Dan and I have talked about, and we're gonna do that with the road shop. And we have funding to do that. We have two grants, two FAA grants. One other thing is on our eight-inch waterline. I've, eight-inch waterline proposed project, I should say. I've been in contact with Far West Engineering in Reno. At one point in time, they did a a product, or a, a design for that waterline. And I asked them to look at it again. There's actually a permit process that has to be done, and they're, they're working on that to see what we have to do. Anyway, he's, they're working on it and they'll get more information back to us. We had an incident, I guess you could call it, at the airport weekend before last. We had a plane fly in, blew a tire on landing. Taxi got off the runway, thank goodness. And then he got on the taxiway, stopped the airplane because he was afraid it was gonna ruin more of where the blown tire was. He got out of the airplane, went back, picked up the pieces, and left the airport. I guess that's the only way I can say that.
You left the plane there?
Yes, on the taxiway, blocking the taxiway. I went out there the next morning. That happened in, like, on a Saturday afternoon. Anyway, went out there next morning and, and looking in the plane, I, I got registration. Called them, left a message. He called me back the next morning. And I guess that was Saturday. Sunday, he called me back. He was working on getting something together to fix, to get her off the taxiway. That took two days. Anyway, finally got about the taxi. It just blocked our taxi. So that was something different. Board appointments. We have a couple in here.
Derek Blomheim, Doris Bridges, and Tori.
Yes.
I did try to contact Paul Schlerer about this on the grass value board, but I did not.
So we have an opening, though, on the Grass Valley Board, or is, oh, this Tori Apperson, it would be Paul C?
No, it would be, she's replacing, I thought she was replacing.
She what?
We already replaced that person.
Oh, okay.
She, the.
She hadn't let her in at our last meeting.
The lady was their last meeting when I went up last month.
Kim?
No, not Kim.
Oh, no.
Trish. Tish, Tish, Tish.
Another person who said she didn't want us to.
Right.
So the only thing we can have open is Paul's.
So we should hold off on that then?
Yeah.
We did send him a letter and I tried to contact him between the last.
So we didn't hear from Paula, though.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Eric Blomheim to the Wildlife Advisory Board and Doris Bridges to the Recreation Board.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
I am motioned. Okay. Here's funding. We're, we're gonna, we're getting there.
Nico is going to have a Zoom call or workshop on August the sixth regarding that funding, so.
And I registered to be on that.
Yeah, and so hopefully we'll get some more information, but we're just kind of in a holding pattern.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Is that a Rural Housing Authority? Yay! Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, listeners, county staff. I'm Diane Arbiso. I'm the Director of Home Ownership Programs for the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. I'm Diane Arbiso. I'm the Director of Home Ownership Programs for the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. It's my pleasure to be here with you today and thank you for having our item on the agenda for you. In support of our request for your 2021 unused private activity bond cap, I'd like to provide you with an update on our program activity for the Home at Last program. Normally, we provide this in your packet in advance, so I apologize for the delay. After our meeting today, I will email the county commissioners and staff the report in writing for your review. So in 2006, for those who would like to have a little refresher, that's when we launched our Home at Last homeownership programs with the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. And we used the private activity bond cap and your very first transfer to us, which was two hundred and forty-seven thousand, to help the first fifty-one families in the homeownership programs. That was fifteen years ago and today we have helped over ten thousand families. We just hit the big ten thousand, literally ten thousand and two homebuyers. And we've had two-point-one billion in mortgage volume through this program. It's been amazing. So we've had sixty-point-two million in down payment assistance provided to homebuyers with their affordable mortgage. And through our mortgage credit certificate program, we've helped provide about thirty-five-point-six million in estimated tax savings to homebuyers through the tax credit they get every year for the life of the loan. Of course, we know homebuyers spend that money right back in their local community, so that's a good thing. In Pershing County, the mortgage, I'm sorry, in Pershing County, the Home at Last program has helped fifty-six homebuyers to date. And roughly half of those homebuyers purchased a home in the unincorporated area of the county. So about half in the city of Lublack and half in the county. And seven-point-seven million in affordable mortgages here in Pershing County.
What's the timeframe for that?
That's from the program start in two thousand and six, yes. For the last year and a half since January of twenty twenty, we've helped five homeowners in Pershing County, three of which were in the county area and two in the city of Lublack. That's eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-seven-hundred in mortgages and thirty-six-thousand-and-one-hundred-and-three dollars in down payment assistance. Half of those homebuyers in the last year and a half received an interest rate below three and a half percent.
Great.
Fantastic. Yeah, we're very happy about that as well. Let's see, and just something that not a lot of people are aware of with our program, it doesn't just provide assistance. We actually have an unassisted rate for those who don't need down payment assistance, perhaps those using a USDA mortgage financing. And with that, they get a below-market interest rate. So we truly are about the commitment to making sure they have the most affordable mortgage. We had an interest rate yesterday of two-point-six-two-five percent.
Wow.
That's for borrowers with a minimum FICO score of six forty. These are good rent-paying qualified individuals, so we'd love to be able to give them that low interest rate. So today, of course, we are here to request your continued support with the homeownership programs that is offered through Nevada Rural Housing Authority. And that is done through your transfer of any unused private activity bond cap to continue our Home at Last programs. We only ask for unused private activity bond cap because if you had another project that was requesting it, we would sit back there and say yay. But it's through the unused cap that nobody is using that we can pool it together across rural Nevada and really make the impact that you've heard about. So as you know, since you've been supporting us through that entire time, we've been able to accomplish quite a, quite a bit in just rural Nevada. Our jurisdiction, as a reminder too, is areas with population under one So of course, that's all of Pershing County program, just briefly, because that is what we intend to use the transfer for. Then I'm gonna call it the MCC because that's much easier to say than a mortgage credit certificate. The mortgage credits, or there I go, there I go again, right? So the MCC actually helps homebuyers both at the time they're purchasing a home and over the life of the loan when they live in the property as their primary residence. At the time they're purchasing it, the estimated tax credit, which averages two thousand a year, is actually treated as additional qualifying income on their loan application. So for those who might be carrying student loan debt or any other debt, it helps to lower their debt-to-income ratios and it helps a homebuyer qualify for a little bit more of a home. Or it helps their, their additional income, for example. So the two thousand averages a hundred and sixty-seven dollars more of income every month. They get that annual tax credit every year for the life of the loan. So until they move out or sell that home, they get that tax credit. So, as you know, with the, the twenty-twenty-one distribution that came to Pershing County, if you don't have it assigned to or allocated to another project that's asking for your support, then it will revert back to the state by September first. And the state will then decide what, what the private activity bond funding will do for the year. And so we would love for you to transfer that to Nevada Rural Housing so we can continue to pull it with the other local transfers. Over the years, you've transferred a total of two-point-six million in unused private activity bond cap, which has definitely contributed to the benefits we've been able to provide through the homeownership program. So thank you again for that. Certainly that helped us be able to provide the seven-point-seven million in mortgages here in Pershing County. So I am here to answer any questions that you may have and just a reminder for anyone who's unfamiliar with private activity bond transfers does not obligate the county in any way. As you know, it's not money, it's the bond authority, so. So thank you very much. That's all I have for you today.
Good job. Bryce, have any comment on that?
I think it's a great program.
It is a great.
And it does help people, so that's awesome.
Thank you, Christian.
So I'm ready for a motion.
So we have, one is a resolution.
What was it?
Twenty-one dash zero seven thirteen.
So Lacey's email is correct in the resolution.
Oh.
Do what?
Her email. It's got a capital D. The other email has a capital D. It probably doesn't matter. But.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and transfer the county's twenty-twenty-one private activity bond cap to Nevada Rural Housing Authority. That's the first one. And then, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding about the resolution. We still need it, don't we? And that we approve resolution twenty-one dash oh seven dash thirteen, providing the transfer of the, those funds.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good job.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Yeah, long trip just for that.
We, I enjoyed being in rural Nevada, so I wish I could get out here more often. We're gonna stay for the eleven o'clock dedication, so.
Okay, thank you. Litigation. Yes. We're back in session. Report from legal counsel. I don't have one, thank you. Report from administrative assistant. Other than the CDVG?
The CDVG grant agreement.
I, I mean, to me, that's, it's great. Also, and it, and it's, and it's in that grant, it mentions also the Indy Energy Electric Upgrade, which of course is not in that.
The Indy Energy Upgrade, we put in the capital improvements budget.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could even go in here.
I don't know that it can. Because we don't have enough information yet. But we did put it in the capital improvement. In the anticipation that.
And that's almost forty-five.
Yeah, and, yeah. And it was just a guess on our part, the amount from MB.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve the grant agreement for the CTVG funding.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a CDVG grant agreement for anyway, for COVID round two funding. For the seniors in, what this is going to do is replace the HVAC equipment on doors as well as airheads. We have a motion and a second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
I motion. Good job. Items for future agendas.
Do we need a resolution changing the effective date of the landfill assessment? And I'm just asking, I, I.
No, I, I think we probably ought to. Let me talk to Laurie and see if there are any additional amendments issued in wires, and if there are, then we advertise it.
Okay.
And what would the effective date be, Carol?
Well, my understanding was it couldn't be done for this fiscal year, so it would be July one of twenty twenty-two. I believe that's when the new bills would go out.
But don't we have to approve?
Then we'll readvertise it for that.
I mean, that's, that was my understanding.
Has the effective date stayed the same? It just didn't happen.
But if it, if that, then is it retroactive? I mean, do you build two years then? That's when I've. Yeah, so that's why I was saying.
I'll talk to Laurie.
Okay.
Just kind of pin down. I don't think that there is a legal reason why it can't be effective during next year. I think it's more a successor.
Yeah.
Issue.
And I just didn't know if we needed to clean that up in some way. That was all.
So we have also on here under future agendas, discussion regarding setting workshops to discuss various matters related to county planning. And topics.
The broadband one Heidi brought up mainly, but that my concern was that we we already had a discussion today about broadband and a lot of it had to do with the concerns, but I think we have to decide like our different phases and that sort of thing. And that all had to do with technology. And then we have, you know, legislative mandates that are coming up, but if you want to put these just on the regular agenda instead of having a separate item, and then we are still waiting for the ambulance and fire services recommendations for that community. So, you know, whether or not, when those things come through, if you want to set aside separate time and, and do that for input or just.
No, they're going to make a report. And it's kind of interesting, we've gone through all this. And now, and it came up that we don't have a way to fund it. Whether it was a GID tax increase, any of that, there's just no way to do it. So anyway, they have a report coming.
When's that report?
I don't know. Okay, so that's. So number seventeen is to request to send a letter to Mike, I guess it's Fuss.
Fuss, I think.
At, at N dot, and Will Barter asking that the cement barriers on the bridge going toward the rodeo grounds be painted. Another roommate and its concerns such as puncture vine eradication.
Several years ago, I had asked Will Barter about those cement barriers. And he said they could be painted. In fact, he told me at one point that he had the paint. So when they were working on the bridge there, I, I just sent him a text and I said, is it possible that they could paint those barriers? And he said, what we'd have to do is send a letter to Mike Fuss care of him to officially request that. So since that was the case, this is when we were doing community beautification. And so that's why I had it put on the agenda. I don't know how your feelings are, if you even want that done or not, so. But that's why it's on the agendas, because he asked that a letter be done from the commission rather than one person requesting it.
And pretty much neglects Pershing County.
Now, like the G twenty-nine bridge, they do say it's on the, or in their budget and their plan for next year, but they've told us that before too.
Well, and that is a separate thing.
It's been, they're twenty, it's been in their twelve years.
Yeah, we have a couple of individuals here that probably remember that. Yeah, yeah.
And they've been doing the same traffic study for the last five years.
I know. But it's in next year's budget, in their plan.
Well, that, that particular thing, I thought it would be good if we sent them another letter asking them the status. And, you know, that we're anticipating that it's going to be done. But as far as the cement barriers, that's up to you guys whether or not you want those painted or not. But like I said, when we were doing the community beautification, I had reached out to Will Barter and he had indicated they could do it and I was just following up, so.
I agree, it could be done, especially when they have nothing better to do than run street sweeper up and down for no avenue.
And then our administrative assistant mentioned, I guess there's some puncture vine problems along the roads and I'm not sure.
They have sprayed some of it and then also.
Right. I saw him out there doing.
Yeah.
We do within county and the city have it very bad.
And I do know there's a couple places where there's graffiti that's been there for months and months, like well, that this particular bridge, when you go on Upper Valley Road across from the RV Park, that graffiti's been there forever. Not forever.
But it's been there six months.
Yeah.
I don't know what they do about that.
Yeah, but anyway, like I said, it's up to you guys on that.
I don't see an issue with sending a letter.
So I can see sending them, sending in the letter asking about the G twenty-nine bridge. Again, it's not, it's something we've already
Yeah.
sent them, but it'd be, at least maybe they would answer it and say they do have a new person that's like their contact person, so maybe that would do some good.
I don't know if you know too, Lee Bonner left.
That's what I'm saying.
He went to.
He's gone.
Valley. Valley or somewhere, somewhere tropical.
Yeah, he did, he did not do us any favors. Okay, so we want to do a letter for the bridge?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to send a letter to Endot for the G twenty-nine bridge to see where they're at. All those in favor of the motion? Correspondents? Then I think we should adjourn for our eleven o'clock outside. We have the dedication of the memorial tree for Randy Manciello. A reset, what did I say?
A adjourn.
Oh, reset.
I gather in a little bit. You won't have to holler as loud. Really appreciate all of you being here so much. My name's Bill Brewer, I'm the executive director with the federal housing authority. Roger sits on our board, he's been there since Derek, I think. We're just so grateful to have him serving us. We appreciate the people of Love Lock, we're very grateful to the county commissioners, Chairman Rackley. Grateful to the city, Mayor Giles, and, and John. All of the work here on the ground, we just appreciate everybody's help and service in this little effort to honor Randy Manciello. Appreciate all of you being here today. We'll start with some words from Chairman Rackley and all the folks.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I tried to read the name of this tree on here. John. It says it's a blood good London plane tree. Okay. I just thought you'd like to know what that is. Anyway, we're here for a dedication of this tree for Randy Manciello and folks. Thank you all, everybody.
Well, just a couple of words to, what's a legacy? A lot of people think of the legacy as something you leave behind that's financial. It's not necessarily financial. Legacy is really what you leave behind in terms of things that you don't necessarily see or touch. And the Manciello family has been building a legacy here in Percy County and Love Lock for many, many years and throughout the state. Roger's tired of his service in political affiliations, in volunteer service, church. All kinds of flavors have taken him all over the state, got him acquainted with many people. And he's raised a wonderful family. And that family is really the core of his legacy and the service that they continue to render. And the people that they continue to serve are really the great legacy of the Manciello family. We're grateful to be here today to dedicate this living representation of that legacy. And hopefully it will continue to live on and be a great representation of this family and all that they mean to the city, you know, the Virgin. We're grateful to have all of you here today. We have some, some flowers here that you're welcome to take or leave one at the base of the tree. And we'd love to have you get acquainted with us a little bit, we want to get acquainted with you. We took a little tour of the town this morning, get our staff better acquainted with Love Lock. I always love coming out here. Have to be careful, oh, the chief of police. Inappropriate. So thank you all, and that's pretty much all we've got. Please come, get a flower, if you need something.
Thank you.
I